I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the September 26th Planning Commission meeting. Our first action item is to approve the Planning Commission minutes from our August 22nd meeting. Like this for motion. Second, to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
And corrections, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes for August 22nd, 2024, see to five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll open up the forum for any of the items that are on the agenda this evening. And since he's gonna be presenting, I have to say we probably don't have any other comment.
I don't think so.
So we'll move on to our subdivision and land development applications. First one is, do you want to move more out?
Well, I was just gonna say, both of the subdivision applications go with one of the zoning hearing applications. So we'll kind of do that concurrently. And then we can do separate motions or whatever. So first, we have Omar Stoltz. Christie's got the description on the agenda a little off. They're actually subdividing the 10 acre lot off of the 57 acre tract to create a new lot. They're not actually annexing to 2210 9.3 as she described there. So the issue with the new lot, the maximum impervious coverage in the Ag district for lots over 10 acres is 5%. The result lot would be at 6.2% or so. They do have a very long, you know, flat driveway. That goes back there. So, you know, that contributes in part to the impervious coverage. But the existing lot goes around the existing stone building upon the area. Pavilion on that lot is 10 acres. And then the resultant lot, the residual, has an existing house and building and stuff on it. So we reviewed the subdivision plan first. That generated the comment for leaving the variance for lot coverage. So you will also have a zoning hearing application before you tonight for that. Beyond that zoning issue for the impervious, there's some clarification that's needed for some of the access easements. Some of those driveways, I believe, are shared. And I'll let Chris speak to those. And really, because it's a minor subdivision, there's no new development proposed. We just need draft legal descriptions. They'll post new monumentation before recording the plan so there'll be no financial security. Planning Commission can determine if any landscaping is required since it is a minor subdivision plan. And there's a reference to agricultural easement on the plan. So the Ag Board will just need to confirm that they are in agreement with the subdivision. Chris, do you have anything to add on this one?
Yeah, I mean, just one clarification on the ag easement. That 10 acres was actually reserved out of the ag easement.
Okay.
That's the reason it was reserved out. So that particular 10 acres, the exact dimensions are the exact size of the reserved ag.
So that would, that you have an impervious coverage issue at 6%. Why can't you just make the lot bigger to be under the 5%? And it's because it's restricted by the ag easement. So that will be the justification why the impervious coverage relief is requested. Anything else on this one, Chris?
Probably would want to make sure we, I know that's a supervisor thing, but a recommendation for not needing a landscape plan. And also, I'd like to not have to monument the outlands of the parent parcel.
Okay.
Possibly the interior parcel, the 10 acres has been completely monumented.
Okay.
But the exterior parent parcel, which is another 47 and a half acres, is not completely monumented.
Okay. Does look like there's one to be existing monuments in that? And then, you know, the new ones will be added around.
They are.
The amount of property are there. So that would be a partial waiver from Section 621 of the SADA to not monument the parent parcel in full. So I would say, first, does Planning Commission have any comments on either the subdivision itself? Whether landscaping should be?
What's your current position on the topic?
It is used quite often. It's actually where their big pond is there, where this slide, and they have a, what do you call it? A pavilion where they have, you know, picnics and things like that. It's basically used for the community for picnics and things like that. So it is maintained, it's mowed and things like that.
So is that next to the Tellah?
It is, correct. It's right next to the road that goes up.
Pretty clear.
Yeah, the newest road there that runs along the western side of the property.
Didn't we just have the adjacent property to us? Or was it that property there?
Angus Dash was here for something.
Because he wanted to put a building for something. And we were concerned about screening against Tellah and there was the length of the driveway.
I think they had a new row line.
Yeah.
Right, tell we have.
So how do we feel about, I guess, the subdivision or the annexation? Are we okay with that? How about the landscaping? Do we see any reason why there needs to be landscaping?
It was not the tree.
As I was saying, so what would it be? So then, the monuments, what's currently around the water track? There's other pins?
There are, I think there are three pins on that particular property.
Looks like there's a, down by the road.
Yeah, there's one.
There's an axle found. And then we'll, there's four found on the western side at the road. There'll be one put on each one's side because of the flood trip coming down. And as you go back, before it makes the main turn east, there is an iron pin in that corner. And then it goes around the opposite rear corner and has a concrete model found.
Yeah, that's Tellah corner.
Yeah, right, Tellah. And then there will be ones for, there are ones now on these four corners. So, you know, a couple bends as you're going. Back in the front, don't necessarily have them, but you get one at this corner and one at here.
I'm surprised he's not wanting the western side of Tellah, that's Jason, the Tellah.
You know, it might be here, to be honest with you. We surveyed this about eight years ago when we built Omar's home. And it really wasn't a critical to us at that point, I think. No, I mean, there could be one there. I can look for one, we could look for one. But if we're gonna look for one, we might as well say it. You know what I'm saying? If we're gonna do the process of trying to find it, then, um, you guys.
So what do you all feel about that?
Is there, so the reason for not doing it is just?
Division of work, money division. Yeah, in my professional opinion, I didn't really need it. What we're doing for this, obviously, is that's on the opposite side of the property. Establishing the Tellah property line and the property lines along the Dash property were the critical pieces. Wasn't too worried about that corner. It really didn't have any relevance to the property.
So there's no change in the other chapters, Chris?
Well, it's done what it is. I can give you some little bit history if that's okay. When we built his home back in 2018, or I think it was 18 or 16, it was. Gideon had the property at that time. Gideon gave it to his, well, transferred it to his son Omar. And at the time, they didn't want to do the subdivision because they didn't want to delay. They wanted his house built. So we built the house, but they had an understanding, verbal, obviously, understanding that eventually at 10 acres would go back to Gideon. So that's what this is. It's basically going back from father back to, from son back to father. And he's actually already listed on the, on the non-building waiver as the new owner. Because I have to list on, and I request that through the county, which they approve. I have to list who the new owner is gonna be. It's gonna be.
So Gideon's gonna be where it says?
Gideon's gonna own that 10 acres.
Oh, he's gonna own the 10 acres.
Yes, correct. Correct, yeah.
I was gonna say, I'm surprised that he actually gets rid of that.
What's that?
I said, I'd be surprised if he gets rid of that.
Oh, yeah, no, no, Gideon's, no, no, they're not getting rid of it. Again, it's going, it was Gideon's, all of it was Gideon's. Went to Omar's who built the house, now we're just taking the 10 acres and giving it back to Gideon. For the community, clearly.
So what are our thoughts?
I don't know.
I'll bet it's back here. I'll bet the Tellah did their, their, or their, or their Tellah. But you know what, folks, so?
You know what, we have to take another trip out there. I can take a look. I'll tell you what, I'll take a look. I don't think it's, I don't, I'm trying to remember if that's wood in there. I don't have the plan in front of me. Is that sure wood in there?
I think that's wood.
Yeah, that's pretty rough.
I think the Planning Commission's recommendation is to recommend not requiring a monument.
Okay, thank you, yeah. It's gonna cost them.
And what else we need to take action on?
So.
We'll just put together a motion.
It'll be, okay, it'll be a long motion. Because first, you need to take position on the zoning hearing app for support, no position, or again, there's zoning relief to have an impervious cover over 5%. You need to know?
Well.
You want to do one big one for, you want to do that for me?
Probably should do the same.
It would be simple.
How many more do you want to support? I'll second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's a recommendation for support.
And then, Chris, what do we call the principal use of this lot? Still, like agriculture since it's 10 acres?
What I thought is recreational and agricultural.
Okay, so as long as it's agricultural with an excess reuse of recreation, then that's kind of what it is before.
Correct.
I just don't want to muddy the waters with it being pure recreation to begin with. Okay, so then your second motion, we, he got this, normally you can't make a recommendation on a plan if there's a zoning issue. But in my, in my head, since you put the zoning application in, you know they're applying for them, then I would be comfortable with you guys making a recommendation. Oh, yes, I forgot the waiver. So if you want to make a recommendation for the board to either grant or not grant the waiver from Section 22, 621 for only monumenting the new lot, you can do that part next.
So the motion would be to support recommending relief from 22, 621 for limited monumentation.
I'll leave the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, and then the last part would be to recommend that the board grant conditional final plan approval contingent upon Tecticon's letter dated September 15th, presuming that they obtain the necessary zoning.
Before you do that, Nancy?
It's just it's done as a minor, because it's a minor subdivision. It's at the discretion of the PC.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be a waiver, okay?
No, I just put in the meeting that it's that no landscaping's not required.
Sorry, did we?
You're fine.
Just wanted to hear it.
Just kidding, me on my head.
So the motion would be to recommend conditional final subject to complying with the Tecticon review letter items dated 9/15/24 and also being successful in the zoning relief request. Okay. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So ultimately, if they don't get the zoning relief and they have to modify the plan or come up with something, then they would have to come back to you for it. Unless they decide to, like, delete existing projects or something, make a waiver. Is this the one that has the non-building waiver to us?
They both do.
They both do, all right. I think we only got one back so far, but, um, as we are not writing, we both have the same one.
He had a question for me and I, today I got a call, I gotta call him back. The other, the other one's.
So both of the subdivision, the two plans that are on the agenda, they both have a non-building waiver before PAPD. Ultimately, once that's signed by the township SEO, then the Planning Commission chair needs to sign that. So can I just get a motion authorizing the ad to sign the non-building waivers for both the projects upon approval of the SEO?
And which project, just to be clear?
It's for this Omar one, and then it's for the next subdivision plan that we're gonna move over. So we could do that, but you have to be doing it with the other plan that you want to do.
Well, I just wanted to make sure for me which one you want.
Yeah, Omar and then Melvin.
So the request is for authorized signing of the non-building.
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then the second plan is again, one that has the zoning application along with, all right, Melvin and Linda Fisher. So remember, Melvin, I was a little confused when I first opened this. Melvin was here last month with us for his property that's across the street with bakery and the land development rural occupation. So now, this is on the opposite side of Walnut Road. And that only, that property has two barns close to Walnut Wood. But that property runs from Walnut all the way back to Maple. And also has furniture on Plus View. And what they want to do is annex a 1 acre, basically, parcel from Melvin's tract, which right now is like 10.3 over to Levi's lot. So that Levi's goes from about 3 to 4-ish. So in doing that, then, that residual lot of Melvin's actually ends up just under 10 acres. And therefore, they need variance for the lot area. So that came up during our review, we called that out. They put in the variance application for the lot area. Beyond that, I don't think I really had any review letter comments.
Does Melvin's property go across the road?
They're two separate.
They're two separate parcels.
Yes, sir.
Now, yeah, I mean, it's all in deed, but it's two separate parcels because of the road. County automatically could use the second parcel.
I have a question. One of the application says that, is anything about property not conforming to zoning limits? Says yes, 9.5 acre existing.
Well, here's the thing, it is actually, I'm gonna clarify that. The actual parcel that he has now is 9.5 acres. Lot definition that township has for gross area. Gross area doesn't include the road. Lot is 10 and a half because the road is included in that. When you eliminate the road of the lot, the existing lot actually is of 9.5 acres, which is shown on there. We would be cutting it down to 8 and a half acres. 9 and a half to 8 and a half, just to clarify the actual acres.
Isn't that gross acreage? I don't understand what you're saying about it including road.
The definition of gross acreage means the total acreage minus the road in this town, according to the definition for gross acreage here. So the gross acreage size of that lot is 9.5 acres because there's so much road fund.
Are you just talking about the right leg?
The right, yeah, the right leg.
Is that because, well, a lot of deeds are written to the center of the road. So Chris is saying by the deed writing to the center of the road, it calls it 10.39 and so. Yeah, pulling up the definitions.
Yeah, I just didn't think we ever met it out the right way. But it's literally deed.
Yeah, we triple checked it, as we.
Yes, we have a net lot area, which deducts a bunch of things. But we see, yeah, well, gross lot and a lot area from gross. The area plan contains within the limits of the property lines bounding a lot as shown on the deed survey plot, subdivision and land development plan, excluding any portion of the lot included in the street and valid by its plan. So in either case, if by our definition, the existing gross lot is 9.5, then it's an existing non-conforming lot and they'd be making it worse. Go further below 10, then. So either way, we still need the.
Right, I was just trying to clarify.
A variance for being under 10, one way or the other. So, so really, the, there's really nothing else going on besides the annexing, you know, that land that's for. So it's a matter of, do you have a position on, A, the zoning relief, you know, to allow that lot area to go from the 9.48 to 8.5 or so? Everything else with the review letter, it's a minor plans and landscaping, doesn't even come up. It's just an annexation, there's a new lot being removed. So there's nothing else besides if, or you're gonna have the same way you were requesting about the monumentation for the balance of the.
Being a parent parcel, I would like to.
Like to just do the pins on the annexation parcel.
They were shed on.
So talk about the variance first because you can't have the plan without that. Comments on the variance request, again, support, there's against or no position on the application to allow that lot area to go down below.
So the point of this is just to be able to sell 10 acres to the town, correct?
Correct, it is transferring 10 acres. Which brings us up a little bit, because he's way under 40 acres now.
Is that property an active, an active?
Uh, no, it's not. Oh, wait a minute, you mean, you mean. You're on the, you're on your. Yeah, it is, it is actually in 319. And we've already talked about, you're allowed to sell 10% of yours. This, the term is already on that.
But he owns property across the street.
He does.
And that, and they don't, they don't take into account that's a two separate parcel that's put in action. So you can, you can, you can put the total.
Right, but the acreage that he sells could be subject to, like, rollback taxes once you take it out of 319.
Correct, correct, correct.
Yes.
To the other, I'm sorry, I was, I thought you were asking about Levi's, now I realize what you were asking about. Yeah, his is, but it is well under the minimum, you know, what he's allowed to give under 20 acres.
Yeah, no, I was just saying that.
They'll only bridge the acre.
Exactly, yeah.
That's much, that's what it is, about that one, I mean. You guys.
Is that here?
Not what it was. I'm reaching for the other reason. It's not what it was.
Yeah.
It's embarrassing. We figured when we looked at something, it's a cross. So how do we feel about the variance? Their motion, the support?
Comment?
Your second? Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Um, take a no position on this one? Not that it matters, but I just think it's kind of, it could be, um, it could be something, you know, giving it time and funding without hardship.
So Troy made a motion, take position of support, Levi called him second, is it?
Who else in the world called? So.
You're right.
So the world called.
Aye.
You have, you have an statement?
Just staying, just staying because of the ownership interest in the property.
Levi?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye.
Do you want to?
Yeah, can I just, can I say, make one comment? And I know it's our focus, and this is for your, that's one of the reasons why I was talking about the fact that it's already existing non-conforming. So we're not really taking, because I'm with you on that, taking a conforming lot and making it non-conforming. But we're already non-conforming. So we have two non-conforming lots, but we're making one better.
Yeah, I see, I see what your spin is on that. I just see it as, I think the township has to be careful.
I understand, that's fine, I just wanted to.
I think you're, you always have to worry about precedent.
Sure.
You know, when there's no hardship. Somebody else wants to come in and do it. How do you say that to the next person?
So then the second part of that would be, again, asking for a partial waiver from, to not monument the entire parent tract and just put the pins in for the annexation parcel. It looks like the balance of Levi's lot is fully pinned. So the zoning relief is just to not make sure all the corners of the parent tract are pinned. Again, it's got front, front, three roadways, so there's not too many internal benefits there.
How do we feel about that? To, to.
Recommend this.
Recommend relief from the monumentation. Okay, two second? All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
And where Mark has his things?
Okay.
The wall is, he's got to provide you with the reason why.
Right, and I already moved again, he has no ownership of it. I think enough. I said it for him.
So just, the minutes need to.
Yeah, it'll be in there.
I don't really.
I thought it was always the wall, but that's.
I thought it was always the wall, but that's.
So then the last part of that is whether you guys would consider recommending to the board of supervisors that they can't condition a final plan approval contingent upon them obtaining the necessary zoning relief for which they have applied, as well as complying with the September fifteen E I.
Paper to the motion, give a second.
All second.
Any questions or comments? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Any abstain?
You go.
You again, write that like walk through crime shit. So, all right, so that takes care of both the zoning permits as well as the subdivision sections on the agenda. Chris, did you make, I think you may be a chance to add everything on this one. Do you have anything else you would like to say to us?
No, no, thank you, and it's been a while since I've been here.
You have? The last time I saw you was in the parking garage in Met.
I got eight season tickets this year, so let me know. See ya, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the other business topic, which is the short-term rental ones is, did, did we, did you all get a chance to read through it?
So, I know we had a couple people that weren't here last month, so just to catch you up on this, last month we had two variance applications in one court property of Quinn County, which was a single-family dwelling in the Act district, and the other one was for a shed that was converted to be used as a short-term rental within NR maybe, I feel it was zoning district, it wasn't Act. So, in light of those zoning hearing applications that came in, our zoning ordinance as it stands doesn't have a direct provision for a short-term rental use. Overall, the solicitors we've worked with in different municipalities have all agreed that a short-term rental is different than a normal single-family dwelling unit, even though you could take a dwelling unit and rent it out to people. Normally, you're renting three months, six months, a year, or whatever it is. The concept of a short-term rental, the general definition is any rental less than like a month, less than two or three days. So, in light of those hearing applications, the planning commission had asked the board whether they felt it was time for us to put together zoning amendments that would provide regulations for short-term rentals. As you saw in the examples, several nearby municipalities have done this in recent years. I gave you examples from Robeson Township, I think Earl, my sister, Becknot, my sister, and I'm currently working on one in Herford, which is kind of a merge of the three. I had, I wanted to give you guys the examples so we could talk about some of the general, general, Harold? That, of what you guys want to, kind of the level of regulations, where you guys want these, so that we can pick what pieces of ordinances to put in. One of the first things that you guys really consider to decide is what zoning districts is it appropriate for this use to be in? Some of those municipalities, I think it's all basically allowed everywhere. There's other municipalities that say, for you guys, the comparable would be like your Ag and your RC zoning districts, where you generally have a bigger lot size. You're not in close proximity, like the neighborhood residential, so, you know, in a new development like Chestnut Bridge, in the mobile home parks, you want to be allowed, you know, to have these. Then the other caveat is what types of structures or housing units should they be allowed? Should they be allowed just in single-family detached? Should they be allowed in townhomes? Should you be allowed to just rent a room, you know, in your house? Or does it have to be the house, you know, different things like that? So, that's kind of your starting point of deciding those aspects, and then move on to the nitty-gritty details of, you know, do you want to have certain restrictions, you know, is there annual permitting program, you know, is there a need for inspections, you know, things of that nature that you wouldn't see in the examples, you know, there's kind of all levels of what they do, so.
So I write over these pretty, like all of them, and I'm kind of torn between the idea of another occupied versus not. I think it's, in some ways it's better if another is on premises. I also think it's kind of strange to rent out a room, a chair, like it was having, people coming in our house every night over there, if you have to.
Right.
But that's just me. But I think they should definitely be single-family only.
Detached or?
Yeah. That's just my opinion.
So would you say, single-family in, in any zoning district, as long as it's single-family detached on it? Like the.
Like that would be the mobile home parks, which is actually.
Technically, there's single families.
So maybe we just.
Well, we could exclude it from the.
But you mentioned, you could, but you could pick certain zoning districts that they are allowed, and you can pick certain other ones, like Chestnut Bridge Development, they're all single families, that's a NR, that's a lot, they're fairly small, if you are in a neighborhood. Those home parks may have kind of like a neighborhood also, that you're in ten quarters. Some of our, like, perfect discussions have been, you have more, to them, they had more potential for issues when you're in close proximity like that, where neighbors have issues with neighbors. If you own a one or two acre wooded lot, you're really not going, you know, to follow them. I know in the Act district, we have some of the smaller one-acre lots, and sometimes they're, you know, japed up next to each other, but they're one-acre lots, not five thousand or ten thousand, you know, like the Chestnut Bridge and the little home park lots are, so.
But all the parking, if, if we, most of the parking restrictions throughout these sample ordinances were pretty consistent that there would be, like, two extra spaces, or one space for each room rent. Won't that, won't that pretty much take care of the, the small lot, single families, because there won't be.
Back to like in Chestnut Bridge, they generally have enough parking, they're not going to start two cars.
But is it Chestnut Bridge, they may have their little thing that they can, you know.
I guess if nature, I would feel.
The HO, the HOA could actually supersede.
Right.
And restrict it out if they so choose.
Right, because there's, like, there's no sheds allowed at Chestnut Bridge.
I mean, I would be fine saying just Ag, RC.
Yeah, the minimum is if Wall Street parking spaces, you require for the single-family dwelling, plus one space for each rental. So if you would rent huge bedrooms, maybe.
Yeah, I don't think we should allow, I don't think we should allow people to rent more than bedrooms in the house. I think it should be one.
Like, do you think that's the whole unit?
Or one, one dwelling, one unit, right? Like, I think people renting three, four bedrooms out of the house is excessive.
Well, it's part of the problem, keep that from happening, but.
Not in like, like, these other areas, I mean, in that.
So if you would, if you would say just rent it out for one, one person, one couple, one bathroom.
Just one.
Resident unit.
Yeah, one resident unit, or, well, whether that is, was it on premises or not.
So a unit could be just a bed.
Right.
Would you have, if you have an house with five bedrooms or something, can you bring your college students there, and if you can use their money? Are they going down to the grocery store, or you're buying a litter, and you're going to turn to their money for the house?
I think, I'm trying to think of protecting the residents as opposed to transient visitors. I mean, if you're renting to college students, it's probably not going to be for less than thirty days, which is what they're applying. This is more so for just people coming in now for like, a weekend or something like that. And I'm trying to think about like neighbors and. Yeah. Right, which I think, I think it could be problematic for neighbors and existing tenants that are living next to somewhere similar, having all these people in and out of their, because Airbnb, you know, rent a property, you get an application, you got to go, because they're coming, they're living there, Airbnb, and there have been a lot of times where we use the kids go online, because you have no idea. They just go online, show up, and.
One of the, and they're being, I don't know, he comes in and, like, there's somebody that's putting his stuff, and he gets something, he comes in, he does get, he's saying, he comes in, he goes on.
Well, they're gonna leave, they're not saying no. I mean, if it's available, I mean, okay.
I guess he's had his, he got recommended, recommendation on, on that, so.
Yeah.
I am probably, we'll resume that, but it does to the most. Well, I think what, what, like, once, once it was ready, it's.
Right.
You know, stuff like that, for the most part.
Yeah, and I think for the most part, I think that there aren't a lot of problems in that lot, that's why people do it, but I think we have to be aware that if there are problems, we have had tools in place to, I don't know, protect.
I don't think it's easy for Troy, but on the, on the good side, like, there's them as well, you know, just there is someone who may not.
Well, they do, but she's. Well, we have, we regularly, Airbnb's.
Better practice.
Better practice, right.
So, so this is a little.
I'm just not a big fan of underregulation.
I'm not either, but I also don't want.
What's the type of duty law, underregulation?
Yes, I mean, I agree, I don't like law regulation either.
I'm looking through, we were just saying that the Breckin law, which is the first one, is probably, I think people would have watched through my, but.
Yeah, that's.
I was looking to see, it requires, it requires the dwelling owner to be present.
I think it requires them to have a management person. Yes, like, I think that would require somebody to have, like, a contact person within, owner must contain a local contact person who lives within, they have a one-hour drive to the property, and must provide contact information to the vendor and the township. That's kind of been there, so that if there is a major issue, you don't have somebody that lives in Florida, owns it here, and has that, that you have a nearby person. Just to try to, the student had sent me an email, because you couldn't be here. You said there were many good points in several ordinances, maybe we can provide good, one, she likes the Breckin township requirement that only single-family dwellings qualify, she pinches at the thought of apartments or addicts or lots being listed. This ordinance also stated short-term rentals could only be in those dwellings that consisted at the time ordinance adoption. She liked the requirement that the vendor must be twenty-five, and that person must be prested during the rental period. She likes prohibitions for parties and events, and shooting of guns or fireworks. Subordinances list no ATBs, RVs, trailers, requirements for management safety standards, all good. She likes the idea of an annual renewal permit, certification that occupancy taxes are being collected. She thought about the requirement that the property cleaned and inspected after each rental. She would suggest that the owner can keep a log, if it be inspected and the permit's up for renewal. So, that's hers in general. I'm not quite sure what she means, the property cleaned and inspected after each rental. I mean, that's certainly not something I think township's going to want to get involved in, is inspecting it after, you know, somebody leaves for the weekend. We don't have, in terms of inspections, the township doesn't have a normal medical program. A lot of times you see that in the burrows, like, that was Bill Barrow, Bodie Zone, you know, we used to have one, Bodie Barrow, you know, has one, that those have established rental program. So in those municipalities, I can see, looking at the air, B and Bs and short-term rentals, you know, kind of the same way with the annual by annual inspection, but, so, you know, I don't know.
There should be, there should be some inspection, and maybe it's yearly, like, there's a yearly renewal of caller license.
Right.
For compliance. Some, I was looking through this one, some of them had some pretty good restrictions, that you're not going to be able to rent out an attic, or, but the definition in the Breckin ordinances, if you, if you all have that, it says, single-family, this is their definition, short-term rental. Single-family detached dwelling in which lodging is designed and provided for transients for a period of thirty continuous days or less, in return for compensation for the owner. A short-term rental house is not owner-occupied during the same time period as a transient occupancy. Use of the dwelling as an improved bedroom, breakfast establishment as an accessory, you shall not be considered short-term.
So not going to say the owner.
Doesn't have to be.
Right, or, yeah.
Right, so it's more or less saying you're renting the house.
Right.
It doesn't allow for renting bedrooms, you know, out of there, so.
Then in their short-term rental use restrictions, it goes through a fair amount of requirements that they have to meet. But, one thing I need to see is, I didn't see in here that you have to be within a certain amount of miles.
In one of us, Breckin's is a local contact person who lives within a one-hour drive to the property.
Others.
Hartford made theirs within like thirty-five miles. Just because one hour can be, I mean, you could be in parts of New Jersey, and Maryland, and Delaware from here, you know, in an hour. And, an hour, if you're a full hour without nothing, you know, you could be an hour and a half or two, or more, so. But most of them had some type of provision like that, about having a local contact person that the township keeps on file, so that there, there is a major incident, you know, the township or the police be at fault or somebody.
The other thing I don't see in the Breckin is, how do you regulate the number of options?
I think.
One of them, one of them had that.
Yeah, I think it's two per bedroom, isn't it? Is what I.
That was somewhere, I don't know if it was in.
Yeah, one of them may have, and some of them, you know, and that's what some had those types of restrictions, and, you know, some didn't.
Yeah, I think you have that way of determining the maximum. Oh, I think you have that way of determining the maximum on your policy. Right, so if it's a four-bedroom house.
Well, kind of, I mean, there's no, on a normal residential dwelling, there is no occupancy, you know. If you're a family and you have, and kids, you know, you can still live in your house regardless of the number.
Yeah, and I think that's different for somebody living there in the present day.
So if Earl's house here, that's what you were saying, occupancy or short-term rental facility shall be limited to no more than two persons.
So when they can't inspect it the first time, I think it's very.
Really make sure there's not, you know, which way that is.
Right, yeah.
I think that's on, and it should be in whatever we recommend. So, if, if we're kind of using words rec nat, we should, we should move that over and add that. What we're saying was, if you hear that, we're saying that the maximum should be two people per bedroom. So if it's four-bedroom house, the maximum, folks can be in there.
So, or generally, maybe.
They have like, um, so they were, I think, because we didn't have any, some, well, I hope he's in there. It had four bedrooms, and then the ground basically had a large basement with, uh, dark, and the ruler wasn't there, which was, you know.
Well, I think you also have to balance between, the subject means that the house, you know, and stuff, because.
Because your subject.
Your subject besides based on the number of bedrooms. So, and while they don't count the number of people, you know, if they routinely have four bedrooms and twelve people in there, they're going to blow up their subject system, you know.
But, but.
Well, we have a four-bedroom house.
A four-bedroom house is five hundred dollars a day. And the typical house uses about a head.
Right, yeah.
So, so, unless it's, unless it's a cheap owner's size.
Right, yeah, so I mean, it's just a balance of whether you want the people limit or not for control.
I see where he was, there was no, you know, to say something, it's fairly slight, nor is that. I knew you think that, and it's actually a bigger custom than that, than that four-bedroom.
Yeah, and part of it, and part of Herford's issue is, Herford doesn't have a local police department under it, they have a lot of these safeties. Their, their big thing is, you know, how many regulations do we put in if we don't necessarily have the mechanism to enforce it? So they actually took, decided to take out theirs, things like no shooting on property, no ATVs, and no this, and left the general statement as in one of them about, you know, comply with state laws, you know, don't have disorderly conduct and stuff like that, um, to leave it a little bit more general. So I mean, you could say two per, um, bedroom, how much that's going to be. Police, you know, is a different matter. It would probably only come up that, if there was, you know, a huge party, a major voice playing, and, you know, you end up going there, now there's fifteen or sixteen people there, you know, then it can come up, um, but, you know, so. So in general, just things I've heard fairly thoughts on. So we're thinking single-family detached only, and are we thinking only renting the whole house or being able to rent part of the house while it's still a bit too high?
I don't know, I would feel about renting houses when you don't.
Yeah, you, you would have to like, almost, you either only have the bedroom and bathroom, you know, that's private to you. You have to, in Honeybrook, a dwelling unit can only have one kitchen, it buys every ordinance. When you get that second kitchen, it's like you have that in-law quarter, because that's where you run the unit. You know, or how it is, so, you know, you'd be limited on what you have and stuff.
Rec nat's, and rec nat is short-term rental house is not going to be.
Right, so it's basically you're renting the whole house.
It's within thirty-eight, right?
Yeah.
Less than thirty-eight.
That's, you know, would, would the door yet be considered, if somebody's living in the one house, and they're renting, or whatever, three-three, which is still one house, then.
I think if it's an approved accessory dwelling unit, then it would, I mean, you could allow that. You know, in an existing single-family, um, dwelling or approved accessory dwelling.
Dwelling, yeah.
Probably the owner occupied are more the law.
They wish I had that.
Yeah, like, you say a, a single, a single person is in a house that's got the bedrooms, and they're going to rent out, they're probably not going to. Want to do a short-term.
There's a couple rounds here that I saw when I was on Airbnb.
So, then how would we want to recommend, that owner may or may not be there?
Maybe if you're there as a family and, you know, I, I can see if there's a lot of maintenance there, but if it's suffering, maintain, one doesn't have to be there. Because the family is a little proud of you.
Yeah, it's probably not going to be so much a battle, it's going to be a few individuals.
So I guess it's a matter of, to what extent do we want to use Airbnb's in there? So if you have to do it as you're renting the whole house, then that's basically the principal use of the law. If you get into doing it where you're renting bedrooms and stuff like that, then we'll almost back to the conversation we had last month about the one on Southwood Road where it was in the shed, and you kind of have two principal uses, you know, all a lot, and.
I mean, that's not as well, that would never be well, so that never would have been allowed.
Right, yeah, but you know, but you still have, um, you know, the two on there, so. I guess a couple of it, if you can open it up and you can rent bedrooms, you know, for short periods of time, then, you know, you may see more of them. Not, but, I don't know.
So in Herford's, an accessory dwelling unit that is intended to be used as, and meets the definition of, which we're, um, also needs the requirements. So, if, if a shed can meet requirements.
I think an accessory dwelling, it's the same, we have like the in-law quarters and stuff like that, not an accessory structure.
Yeah, dwelling, any kind of dwelling, that's actually the name, approved as a dwelling, yeah, much better.
So, are there, who's camper or?
Well, campers are, despite themselves, that's not being a dwelling.
Right, and we're saying it has to be a single-family dwelling, so that one is being permitted. I don't think any of these ordinances permit campers to be, you know.
So what I could do, I mean, I think some of this needs to be thought out a little more. I can kind of use rec nat as a basis. Some of the other provisions that they committed to others, um, that we want to think about, like the number of people per bedroom, or the, you know, accessory dwelling and experience, single-family dwelling, things like that. You know, we can, I can add it in there and then get that draft out to you guys, and then you can think of those individual, pieces and decisions, I mean, it's kind of hard to look at four or five examples, that were many we have here, you know, pull out everything, so, um, you know, we can start with something and then discuss it further.
There's a lot of Airbnb law.
I haven't looked up.
I forget, I did look last time.
I feel like you guys were saying more ten, fifteen, something, but I don't know if I'm pulling that on.
It's that.
Herford, you're talking about a lot.
There's a couple other, VRBO, um, there's a couple different. Say it's. VRBO.
Oh, or.
Yeah, it's the same thing, just different, some people might use that, some people might use.
Have they had, is this one sometimes the township in, probably not?
I don't, no, we only had one that came up, um, as an issue, and that resulted in a zoning variance application they put in. In the hearing for that one, he actually put that on hold until he could figure out whether that structure he was using, um, can actually meet building requirements and things of that sort. The other one that's on Quinn County, um, that wasn't established yet, and they were proactively coming in for a zoning hearing. I feel like that zoning hearing is scheduled, but I'm not sure for when. And, uh, but I haven't heard many complaints as far as, um, complaints about, you know, some of that. The one on Southway?
Yeah.
Yeah, complaint came in, and that's how we, um, or our office got notified somehow by the township that they went without, we investigated for, like, construction without a permit and, um, operating short-term rental without, you know, the appropriate approvals. But no other one, except in Honeybrook, that come across our eight area.
Was that for the neighbors that complained about them?
I don't.
Someone from the township.
I'm not sure. I usually say. There's other, there's other zoning officers in our office that handle the complaints mostly, so I don't recall on the form to, put the complaint in.
Green, Marjorie.
Yeah, generally, that's been their policy for a number of years, because they have formal, point of form. Most communities have, do that. Generally, I think the thinking is, it's very easy for you to, your neighbor to be doing something, and you're really a bit there. Easy to pick up the phone and call and complain about them, but if you actually have to take the time to fill out the form and put it in, it makes people think a little more of whether this complaint is worthy of complaining, um.
We're reacting, uh, proactively.
Correct.
Yeah.
They're running at six or seven different ones, but I was hoping to get a second.
Yeah.
The other thing about rec nat's, where they just say that they need to be inspected. I think they should like inspected.
Do you think yearly?
Um, I think it's not really just initially to make sure it's a safe place for people to be. Or, you know, or, you know, sure, it's probably not like, you know, a school. For safety.
So an initial inspection to be issued a permit, and then, like, they can subsequent inspections, like annual or every other year, or?
I mean, I was.
Just, oh, they have a complaint, so.
I would say we have a right to inspect it at any point, but maybe it's not.
Are you going to, like, are you going to have to be registered with the township?
The intent, I think, would be for them to obtain, like, a short-term rental permit, kind of like we, we have rural occupation permits, the co-opation permits, just so we're aware of what this is being used for, and.
And could that re, renew yearly? Would that be a lot of work for staff to, to keep up with that, and at that time, maybe it gets re-inspected? I mean, if, if somebody's, if somebody's going through a lot of people, um, every thirty days, it could be twelve.
Yeah, they do, um, annual inspections for rural lots, for kennels, for, I think the limited capacity lots. So they do have like a annual inspection, like, little home parts inspected, annual, you know, so they do have an issue of inspecting.
Initially, initially, for sure, but still think there should be some sort of a regular inspection so that, um, you know, if you were willing to complain, and it's in the ad district, and it's, wasn't that any neighbors, you're going to complain. And. I mean, it should be a nominal fee to register. But the inspection.
Well, I think the township would want to.
Cover the inspection.
Yeah, your initial permit would want to cover your review, this will have to, some of the things I put in Herford's was like, you need to, like, identify which rooms are being used, bedrooms, so we can make sure, you know, with the two forms of Egress, kind of the same thing when we're putting in a house permit. You need Egress, you have fire extinguishers, um, you know, uh, smoke detectors, things like that, and then, you know, you could do like a general health, safety, welfare inspections. Normally, the, when the burrows do mental unit inspections, they generally rely on the property maintenance code. You know, you have the heat and air conditioning function when it's supposed to, you know, it means Egress aren't blocked. You know, your stairs aren't in disrepair, and railings, you know, any valves on your steps or your porches or your decks, that they're not broken. You know, it's those types of like health, safety, welfare issues that are covered by the property maintenance.
Do the Rob, do Robinson, is that a problem?
Yeah, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure how much we had our advantage after that ordinance, I think either one of them solicitors drafted that one.
So how do we want to, how do we want to proceed, like, um, under my position, you want to try and give a shot?
I can put together a draft, and then we can. Bring it back, and I can, currently, um, that whole solicitor was asking, so I guess it was mentioned, at the board meeting, you know, with her involvement as necessary, um, I can send her a draft at the same time it goes to you, to her or her families. And then if the planning commission feels at any point that there's a need for her to, to, can, one of our meetings to go over something, you know, she can, I know she's not in a book of the October, but.
We can probably get to a place where we think it's going to be, you know.
Right. Right, so it could be viewed in our draft and on Herford, and then, you know, once we're good with that draft, we can send it to her, or be back, and we just, we just have to be with her to actually attend the meeting, you know, for some reason. Okay, um, anything else on short-term rentals?
Do we need to go, kind of decide, maybe should not be owner-occupied at the time, or, you know, it's kind of a thing?
Well, I mean, you guys can think about it more, it sounds like, you know, people kind of think it, so I'll write it one way, the ordinance, and then, if there's choices, kind of like, you'd be limited to people in a bedroom or not. I'll write the regulations, but then I'll put a bold or yellow highlight or something afterwards. PC to determine restriction or no restriction, um, up in the single-family, you know, entire house or a lot. you know, entire house or allow partial, you know, but then some of the regulations are just gonna be generic. I'm, yes, no, not thinking, so, I'll, I'll mark up the ordinance accordingly for that, so.
I'm not sure, I feel like that.
I, I, that's what I said, I have mixed feelings about, I think in a way, it's, it's good because of the zoning control.
Right.
What's happening, and, you know, but in a way, it's kind of weird.
No, it is, uh, I guess someone can also think, and it's just like a single, say it's a salesman who owns the area, or he's in the area, you know, yeah, kind of a beach, or you have a big press.
Yeah.
We, we rented, we, we rented, uh, a weekend for Penn's sake, and the owner, she was upstairs, and had a whole gym, so, or a whole big room, it was kind of like, you know, you need something, I won't bother you, you don't bother me.
Was it a full dwelling unit down there, like, was there a kitchen, and a bathroom? So, you know, like, I think there's a difference of whether it's a full dwelling unit itself, because you can have, you have police standing or attached accessory dwelling units in our organs. So, in the case, a little difference, if it's a self-contained dwelling unit, top floor, bottom floor.
Right.
You know, that's one thing first, because then she's occupying upstairs dwelling unit, you're occupying downstairs dwelling unit, versus, you know, I have four bedrooms in my house, one of them is basically reserved for my dad when he comes, but when he's not here, if I rent an empty justice bedroom, you know.
Your shared kitchen, your.
Your, your shared kitchen, living room.
Right.
You know.
All the species.
They have a shared bathroom, like, two or three, which is disgusting, but, so. So, just think about that, and like I said, I'll, I'll do, you know, A, B kind of choices, you know, in the orders. I think our meeting's the twenty-fourth, so I'll try by the minimum, so you guys have, I think, ten days, to look at those and digest it, um, ahead of our meeting, not just a couple days before, so. All right, is there anything else?
Just, I'll give the board a question.
Um, I don't know.
What?
Allowing versus, are we saying we're allowing them to be there, or requiring them to be there?
I think we're, I don't think we're requiring them to be there. I think the choice is whether you only want to allow it so that you are renting the entire house, so that that is basically the only use that's there, versus allowing the owner to be there and sharing part of the house, like just renting a bedroom, not renting a dwelling unit.
Right.
So, that's kind of the difference, are we only renting dwelling units, or are we renting bedrooms? So, it's kind of that concept.
I think we should, I think we should, we should, depending on the situation.
Can we go say to their, to his side?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think about, do some research, you know, um.
We've got a five thousand square foot house, and, but they have extra room in the lower level, and you can separate.
But then regulations would probably be good as far as, like, real now, moving, like, after the.
Oh, I think they should, that should always be in there.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have some generics, even about those types of.
Well, we're, 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 we're.
Yeah.
And you're a little house, so.